Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, December 12, 2016, to order. The time is 7:03. All members of this board are present. At this time, I kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 23, 23A, 24, and 24A. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
Move to approve the warrants?
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Our first appointment, we are running a few minutes behind, I apologize. It is an introduction of our new Assistant Town Manager, Denise Casey. Welcome. If you'd like to have a seat at the table, that would be appreciated. So, on behalf of the board, I'd like to extend a very warm welcome to you for being here tonight. We are of the understanding that you've successfully completed your first week here at Wilmington, and we're very thrilled to have you. I'm going to turn it over to the manager to give a brief overview of your background, which has been stated previously, but, you know, a lot of our communication up front here is just to read it into the record and to share the information with viewers at home so they can put a face with a name and we can all collectively welcome you to the town. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
So, Dee Casey, Dee as she likes to be known, has been in municipal government for almost 20 years, worked in the HR area in large part in a number of different communities, Concord, Bedford, most recently Lexington. She's also taught at Suffolk University where she obtained both her bachelor's degree and her master's degree in public administration, and has been involved in some consulting work for different communities in the area. So, it's been, it was really fortunate, quite frankly, for me to be able to offer the position to Dee, and certainly I was gratified that she accepted because I think beyond the HR piece, there's certainly a lot of other areas that I anticipate that she'll be involved in, the budget process, some of the procurement that we're involved in, and a number of different special projects that invariably come up, including the New England Transrail, so.
Yes. So, before I extend it over to my fellow board members, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to offer any comments that you might like to share with us tonight, and just wanted to give you an opportunity to say hello to the residents at home.
Sure. Well, I'd first like to thank Jeff, obviously, for appointing me to the position and giving me this opportunity, and I very much look forward to serving the town of Wilmington and its citizens for a very long time to come. I love the culture here. It's been very welcoming, and I know that I can help contribute to what's already a well-run community for, hopefully, a very long time. So, I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'll open it up to fellow board members, and I'll start to my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dee, and welcome. It's very nice to meet you, and certainly looking forward to working with you on behalf of the residents, and it sounds like you're extremely qualified, and I think you'll be a great asset to the town, and I can say, having grown up here, it's a terrific place to live and work, and I think you'll really enjoy your time here, so I wish you well.
Thank you.
I echo Selectman Bendel's comments, and congratulations and welcome. I look forward to working with you.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, yeah. And once again, just want to reiterate, you know, congratulations on the position. The former Assistant Town Manager, she did an outstanding job, and I know you'll do a good job as well. Now, truthfully, is it Dee, or is it DeeDee? What do they call you? DeeDee?
No, it's Dee. My cousin was also Denise, and she was DeeDee, so I'm younger, so I got Dee.
All right, there you go, you know. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dee. We're awfully glad to have you. Mr. McCoy mentioned a moment ago that your predecessor established fairly sizable shoes that I'm sure you've heard about. So, based on your credentials and your history, I'm confident that you're going to fit right in and hit the ground running. In fact, I'm hearing that you already have, so that's the good news. There's a lot of work to be done. I'm sure Jeff has brought you up to speed on a lot of the projects that were in the middle of New England Transrail, and, you know, certainly talking about the facilities' master plan, and looking at bylaw reviews, and some of these other really large projects that your presence here now will really expand the bandwidth of the town manager's office and really of Town Hall. So, I'm looking forward to learning from you and working hand-in-hand with you and advancing the cause for the benefit of the residents. So, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Okay, our next appointment is with the Board of Selectmen as a body to have a discussion regarding the fiscal year 2018 budget. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the town manager to help kick off this discussion, and everyone here at the table will have ample opportunity to speak. Thank you.
As I did last year, I wanted to just give the Board of Selectmen an overview in terms of the state of the town, at least the financial state, and then open it up to any comments, questions that the board may have about the process going forward. So, as you know, the process for us really starts in October when the instructions go out to department heads to update the capital improvement plan. This is a five-year plan of our larger expenditures, including vehicles, building repairs, any infrastructure improvements. That information is due into my office in early November, and then from there, we get into the operating budget. Instructions go out to department heads as well to prepare their operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Those documents were due in the office beginning of December, and now, just this past week, I started meeting with department heads, continue to meet with them essentially through the balance of this month to review both their operating and capital budgets. From the town's perspective, at least the local economy, I think it's fair to say we're doing very well. As I'm sure anyone knows who is either in the real estate business or trying to buy a house in Wilmington, it's a hot market in that respect. I think homes are going very quickly. We're seeing a number of instances where homes are being torn down to make way for new homes, in many cases, larger homes. We have developments that are in the works between Murray Hill and the former Garden of Eden property off of Chestnut Street, to name a couple. As a consequence of that, you know, we've seen an increase in our new growth number, which is a key revenue source for us, and the meals tax, another revenue source which was implemented a few years ago, started the first year at around $61,000. We're now up to about $94,000 a quarter, which is certainly a significant help to us. And then the motor vehicle excise, which is always an indicator, certainly one indicator of the economy in general, but we're up over 4.1 million in excise collections. So, that's good news for us. You know, on the other side of the equation, one issue that certainly gives me pause is the state budget situation. There's been, had been talk for a period of time that the governor would issue so-called nine-C cuts, which are cuts to the budgets of the agencies that fall within the executive branch, and in fact, at the end of last week, he did issue about $98 million worth of nine-C cuts. The state budget has clearly been strained as they went into the new fiscal year in order to address some budget shortfalls, and they had to plug some holes, so to speak. The expectation was they were going to try to use some of their extra revenue to replenish their rainy day fund. Unfortunately, they were not able to do that, or at least to the extent that they were expecting to. So, my just general belief at this point, and it's still early, obviously, in the budget season, but I'm not anticipating that we will receive a significant increase either in Chapter 70 school aid or the unrestricted general government aid. So, you know, the hope is that obviously we don't see cuts in those areas, but at this point, it's too early to tell. I would just note, in terms of the capital, five-year capital plan that we have right now, we're looking at roughly $34 million in capital requests over that five-year timeframe. And again, this is each year, we target an amount, typically it's in the two to two-and-a-half million dollar range with respect to capital. Invariably, there are capital requests that wind up having to be deferred. You know, we try to prioritize based upon the need going forward. And I would just note that that $34 million, while it does include some building projects, potential for window replacements and roof replacements and so on, it really does not capture the full scope of our building obligations, and once the facilities plan is completed, one of the elements of the work that the Cecil Group is doing is to provide us with some estimates on building improvements. Some of you who may be following this process will recall that one option is the base option, which is essentially to fix up the buildings that we have, and then they, beyond that, there are various other options. So, you know, as much as we're, I think, doing well budget-wise, revenue-wise, we don't yet have our free cash number. I'm expecting that within the next couple of weeks, and if you recall, at the end of fiscal '16, we had a little over $15 million in free cash. We took $3.5 million and put it into various stabilization accounts and reserve accounts. My expectation is we'll probably be over the $15 million when that number is finalized by the DOR. But again, I think in light of the liabilities that we have, we need to be judicious in how that money is used, and so I expect, when the budget is finalized and submitted to the board on January 30th, that I will once again be recommending money taken from the free cash to be allotted for some of those liabilities, certainly pension liability, OPEB, which I know, and we've had some internal discussions about this, is some question as to the veracity of this obligation, but the long and the short of it is that the rating agencies that look at us when we borrow do believe that OPEB is something that communities need to be funding and funding consistently. So, if for nothing else, in terms of maintaining our AA+ rating, and again, continuing the target of making a, establishing a AAA rating, I think we need to put money aside for that purpose as well. So, that is a quick overview, and as you'll note, in the memo that I submitted to the board, I identify a number of different goals that really continue, and quite frankly, I don't anticipate them changing dramatically from year to year. I think it's important that we try to really be judicious in terms of the increases that are required in the budget, that with regard to customer service, that we focus on treating people the way we want, we would expect to be treated. Certainly schools, there's no question in any community, and I think in Wilmington in particular, the schools are the major element that we want to provide adequate resources towards. Energy efficiency continues to be a long, an issue for me, I think, both in terms of our buildings, whether it's, you know, the window replacements and looking at that going forward, purchasing vehicles that are more energy-efficient. Technology, I think, has been noted in the last few budget messages. We have put a real emphasis on technology, not just for technology's sake, but I think it's been important to, as a tool for us in local government, to be able to do our jobs more efficiently, and also as a tool for residents, whether it's paying real estate bills online or signing up for recreation programs online. Again, the capital I talked about. Also, you know, the, one of the greatest resources we have as an entity is our, are the employees that we have here, and it's important for us to set aside resources for those employees in terms of training, whether it's upgrading computer skills or any number of different areas that, helping them to become more proficient. So, that continues to be a priority. And then health and wellness, along the lines of health insurance, this is always an issue that we're looking at from a number of different angles, one being looking at how we can provide health insurance, a health insurance benefit that is reasonable and appropriate for the employees, but isn't going to break the bank. You know, certainly one of the ways that we can look at trying to reduce the rate of increase in health insurance is to promote wellness, and, you know, to the extent that we can reduce the number of large loss claims, obviously that helps us going forward, so that continues to be an issue. And then finally, but certainly not by any means least of all, putting resources towards substance abuse. This is an issue that, you know, unfortunately, we've seen here in Wilmington as communities across the Commonwealth and across the country have seen, and we need to dedicate resources towards providing the families and the individuals who are suffering from substance abuse with the direction and the counseling services that they need. With that, I'll take any questions, comments, if the board has any particular areas of concern or areas that you believe merit focus, I'd be interested in hearing about those.
Okay, I'll open it up to anyone that wants to speak on this topic. Yes, Greg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that overview and this presentation. I just want to relay to you a couple of my priorities. I am pleased to see a number of things in here, but from my own personal view here, a couple of the priorities here that need to be top of mind here are the, number one is the substance abuse. I couldn't agree with more with what you just stated there at the last part of your presentation, that certainly the opiate crisis is something that nobody is immune to, and I think we all know someone who's battling a disease or struggling with it, and so that certainly needs to be a priority for us. I know that in the past year, yes, last year, I think upwards of $80,000 was allocated for the opiate task force, and I'd love to see that continue. So, that's really a priority for me. Secondly, our investment in the Chapter 70 school aid. I hope that the state budget, the cuts that the governor's presenting won't affect us too much. I think that's certainly a strong school system is the backbone of our community, the reason why a lot of people moved to Wilmington is because of the school system, why they stay here, and certainly it's suited us, some of us up here, pretty well, if I do say so myself. And then lastly, just making sure that we're keeping costs low for our taxpayers through creative budgeting, which I know you've done in the past with your team and prior boards, and I hope that we can, I can help in any way to continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Michael.
Madam Chair, thank you. You know, I know creating a budget is no easy task, and I'm going to wait for the town manager to do his presentation relative to the upcoming year for the new budget, you know, but once again, I think a lot of folks in the community have accustomed to having all these nice vital services that we provide, you know, free bus transportation, free pick-up of trash, there's no user fees, and I think people have come accustomed to that, and we're kind of unique relative to a lot of communities that we continue to do that. So, that's a lot of credit to the town manager, putting together a good budget. We've always taken a conservative approach over the decades that I've been here, and it's, my career did the same exact thing. I see that you're doing the same thing. Unfortunately, taxes do go up, but people's homes have gone up too. And Wilmington's a great place to live, it's very desirable, and it's a great, great community. Been here all my life, and it's a wonderful town. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
My man, yeah. Thank you, Judy. So, Jeff, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a couple of bullets from your goals that really kind of jumped out for me that I wanted to draw our attention, I guess, to the residents. You mentioned it, and it was, it rings with me because, you know, I'm a, when I'm not here, I'm in business, and you talked about providing customer service the way we would like to experience it if we were on the receiving end, and, you know, frankly, and I think we do that by and large. I think virtually everyone that I have interaction with and that I've heard from residents has a positive experience when they come to Town Hall, but that, to me, really needs to be restated and reinforced over and over again, that every individual that works in Town Hall that provides a service to the residents ought to treat those residents as if they were buying a product or a service, because frankly, you know, they're the taxpayers, and they deserve to have a positive buying experience when they walk into the Town Hall, through the Town Hall doors. So, I'm very, I'm emboldened and glad to see that that continues to be a priority for you. A couple of other things, improving energy efficiency. You know, that's not just good for the planet, and it certainly is good for the planet, but it's also good for our pocketbooks. It's an investment, you know, you pay now to save over the long term, and those long-term savings are money back into the taxpayers if we're sensible about that. And along that same line, it's, you've mentioned the use of technology. Applying technology to make staff more efficient, to expand their ability to do more with less provides the residents with more tools and more resources, but it also makes us as a community, as a government, more efficient, and efficiency equals cost savings. So, I think sometimes when maybe residents look at some of the expenditures that are happening and say, you know, what's the upside of this expenditure? These are investments, and technology is an investment in creating efficiency and creating cost savings. The last thing I want to really draw our attention to is something that, you know, you and I have talked about a little bit, and I didn't see it in your document, and perhaps it's something we can just sort of flush out, economic development, and really being enticing, more strategically enticing businesses to come to Wilmington and establish themselves here, and all businesses of all sizes. But I guess I speak specifically of sort of these campus-type businesses, large corporations that would find Wilmington a very attractive place to establish their presence up in Ballardville or throughout town. And, you know, I think we do it organically, and we do a fairly decent job of it organically, but I know that some of our neighboring communities are being much more strategic about how they go to market and make themselves known to the business community, that they are an interesting and a desirable community in which to run their business. And we're not being as strategic and outbound-focused, at least I'm not aware that we are. And so, I have an interest in seeing Wilmington achieve more of an outbound focus on attracting large businesses to town. I don't exactly know how to do that. I know our neighbors to the north have an Economic Development Committee, that there's a number of folks that work on that committee, and I think there's one individual in Town Hall that's specifically focused on that, but in my mind, it might be like Valerie and maybe a few other folks, and maybe some volunteers from the community who could work in a collaborative manner to really go out. And the reason I offer that is, is there a way to establish some amount of nominal funds to afford perhaps some advertising or some marketing or some materials to really talk about how the values of Wilmington to the business community? Just a thought, and I'm certainly willing to have more conversations with you about that, but I think it's time for us to be thinking strategically about how we do that. That's it on this subject, and thank you again very much.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, just a thank you, Jeff, for the overview. It was a good presentation, and just looking over the nine priorities that you have here, all of them are very important, but I'd like to point out the capital improvement plan that has, over the next five years, $34 million that's being projected to be spent, so that we make sure that we get the bang for our buck when we're talking about that type of capital. I'd be interested in seeing, the departments were directed to give you some ideas or updates towards the capital improvement plan that will then intermingle with the facilities' master plan. I'd just be curious to see a little synopsis of what they had, what they did or what they presented. Does that go into the Cecil Group for their overview?
I think much of what is included in their, the Cecil Group is aware of, we certainly, to the extent that they are, they will be made aware of it, but I think in large measure, the items that primarily George Hooper, the Building Superintendent, is talking about, they're already aware of from the assessments they've done. The window replacements, for example, in some of the schools were issues that the Cecil Group picked up on. There's some roof issues, and you raise a good point in terms of how we address some of these capital, building capital improvements in the near term, because with this plan or this study in the process, you know, obviously, we don't want to put significant money into a building that might be destined for mothballing in five or six years, you know, but again, we also need to be mindful that if a building is going to be in place for 10 or 12 or 15 years, that it may make sense to replace the windows and create some energy savings there. So, yeah, those are all things that will be in the mix as this budget gets prepared.
Thank you.
Just wanted to offer some comments as well. I agree with the majority of the sentiments that were shared by my colleagues. Clearly, our budget has reached over the $100 million mark, and the manager had talked about the available cash. I think it's important to note to residents, as our tax rates have just been announced for FY '17, yes, the housing market is very, very strong in Wilmington. The commercial sector, I think Selectman Shampoo's comments about smart economic development really resonates well with me. I would agree with you, Michael, that I'd really like to look into that, and I'm not saying that I have the magic answer, but, you know, four exits off of 93. I do think we're in a very vital spot within Massachusetts, that we could be, you know, a vibrant spot for people to come in and actually establish their business. And I know that there's been some outreach with that. I believe that the Chamber of Commerce for Wilmington, Tewksbury, has recently combined. I do know that Jeff has made site visits and attends as much as he can to help promote Wilmington, but I definitely agree with you, the smart economic development is key. Obviously, the recent news about Textron is disheartening. Obviously, they're going through some challenges, so that's a very sizable business in Wilmington, you know, that's just recently had an announcement. Relative to the schools, you know, obviously, this board and previous boards, previous management have always been very focused on supporting students and allowing them an opportunity in a 21st century learning environment. I do think it's key, some of the comments that were made are relative to cuts, I know, or potential cuts, that the town here has worked very hard with full-day kindergarten, for example, that was funded when it originally started on grant money alone, so I believe that that needs to continue. And also, you know, we really need to be cognizant of our special ed services as well as our general ed services and the amenities and services that we provide to students, so I think that that's important as well. One thing that's on here regarding energy efficiency and just ways to kind of save money, I'm not insinuating that this should be necessarily a 2018 goal, but something that I wanted to mention to the manager is that in the past, we've looked internally at the potential to take some of our ambulance services in-house, and I know that Jeff and Kendra had looked at that, and it just wasn't the right time for a myriad of different reasons, cost, collective bargaining. I would like to see that revisited again to see if that might be an opportunity for the future for the town, and... the future for the town, and obviously, there'll be some upfront investment in doing that, but I do believe in the long term, it would yield revenue back to the town. So I'm not saying that it's as simple as just implementing it. There's certainly terms and conditions and things to look at, but I would like to see us look at that again. And, you know, I think overall, I think the point that selectman Kyra made regarding the capital improvement in establishing some synergy with the facilities' master plan to make sure that our short-term, long-term goals and expenses that we're actually remitting money for tie in, you know, as best as possible. We do need to maintain our buildings while we're waiting for a 20-year plan to play out, but it's how do we systematically do that in a very strategic and effective way that we're spending money wisely? And I have every confidence that the leadership team will see us through that. I just wanted to go on the record, having said that. Regarding the substance abuse piece, I think it's important that we continue to make investments in this area. The social-emotional factor in substance abuse issue is affecting all ages in the community, whether it's school, veterans, elderly, general population. I think anything that we can do as a community to help address that issue, I think, is critically important. And then, from this facilities' master plan piece, I know that there'll be some short-term monies that are spent, but I think that whole process is still, you know, playing out. The one thing I will say, relative to expenses, is I really do feel that a fire substation is important to be looked at, and I know it is being looked at, and I know it's being looked at kind of separate from the facilities' master plan, but I do want to make sure that that goes in the record as being one of my priorities. And also, too, I think it needs to be stated, even though it's a legal matter, that I still have my eye on an ice skating rink for the town at some point in time, if it's feasible. So certainly, I don't want to miss out on talking about senior housing. I know that that came out in our last town meeting, and I know it's also seeded throughout the facilities' master plan, but, you know, anything that we can do to continue to assist our seniors, which I know we have a full complement of programs and services, but, you know, any enhancements, confident that Terri Masiello and her team would bring that forward as something that she would want to see funded. So just want to make sure that we talk about that as well. And that's all I have. Anyone else for anything else?
One last thing.
Yes.
I forgot about it. We've kicked it around in the past, and I think even there's been some momentum, but I don't know where we are with it. The notion of either installing or leasing space on the roofs of some of our municipal buildings for solar arrays and somehow generating revenue with that, have we ever pursued that in any active manner?
There have been some discussions, not recently. In fact, RMLD had spoken to George and spoken with me as well, maybe a year and a half ago. One of the reasons we wanted to put the pause button on that was with this facilities' plan, you know, when you make an investment in a solar array on a roof, you're typically talking about a 20-year commitment. So we were hesitant to make commitments on certain buildings with, and then tire hands, you know, going forward.
It's prudent, I understand that. I'm happy to hear that it hasn't been completely blown off.
No, no.
I think at some point, at the appropriate time, it would be worthwhile to, I think, enter into that conversation again. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, Jeff, that you wanted to?
No.
Okay. All right, let's move on to communications, please.
The first communication is a letter that I sent to Julie Bressard, the chair of the school committee, inviting her to attend the meeting this evening. And she, the next item of correspondence is her response to that request, which I will just read into the record. Dear Mr. Hull, I received your correspondence dated November 30, 2016, inviting me as the chair of the Wilmington School Committee to attend the Board of Selectmen's upcoming meeting to discuss the terms of a separation agreement with its former superintendent. I have a prior family commitment that evening, and therefore am unable to attend. However, I do want to respond to your request. The terms of the separation agreement between the former superintendent of school and the school committee are confidential, as the former superintendent's departure was handled by the school committee as a personnel matter. Notwithstanding that, I recognize the financial terms are a matter of public interest and must be disclosed. Accordingly, I'm pasting into this letter the language from the agreement that addresses the former superintendent's compensation under the agreement. The agreement states, quote, "Ms. Delai shall receive her regular compensation with all benefits, health and dental, less deductions for all applicable and necessary withholdings, including but not limited to state and federal taxes, MTRS deductions, and employee health insurance contributions. For the period from October 4, 2016, through June 30, 2017, Ms. Delai shall receive 19 paychecks, each in the gross amount of $6,630.27 per paycheck, for a total compensation during the period of $125,975.13." End quote. This information has already been shared with the appropriate payroll specialists at the Town Hall, so that they may properly process the checks. I hope that you will respect the school committee's statutory responsibility as the overseer of the Wilmington Public Schools. The school committee is looking forward to moving on from this incident in order to advance its agenda for the benefit of the students and families. Next, under correspondence, is a memo to the board where I referenced the separation agreement and the employment agreement that was provided to me by the interim school superintendent for Ms. Delai. And you'll note that the separation agreement is redacted to some measure, as I presume councils advised, or their council.
No, Jeff, just as a point of clarification, is that, you know, I see two pages here. I believe that this is the full summary of it, but I would assume that both sides signed off on this, and there's a signature page that they may not have sent over.
I, that is my expectation. I don't know for certain, but I would certainly expect that. Next, under correspondence, is correspondence from, this is an email to Joanne Benton, which served as a public records request for any and all documents related to the separation agreement. And then there's separate, from that is a response from the interim superintendent, and I'll read this into the record. Dear Mr. Hull, I am in receipt of your correspondence dated November 30, 2016, making a public records request on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the separation agreement entered into between the Wilmington School Committee and former school superintendent Murray Delai in October 2016, along with any and all documents related to Ms. Delai's separation or termination as an employee of the Wilmington School Department. I am writing to respond on behalf of the School Department. As you may be aware, the supervisor of public records in the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office has determined that the public interest in the financial information of a public employee outweighs the privacy interests where the financial compensation is drawn from a government account. Therefore, consistent with the requirements under Mass. General Law, Chapter 66, Section 10, I am enclosing the financial information from the separation agreement that is responsive to your request. The School Department views the remainder of the separation agreement as a personnel record pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 26, Exemption 3, and therefore exempt from disclosure under public records law. We also view any other documents related to Ms. Delai's separation, to the extent they exist, as personnel records pursuant to MGL, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 26, Exemption 3, and therefore exempt from disclosure under the public records law. Notwithstanding the position of these documents, we have agreed to submit the matter to the supervisor of public records and will abide by whatever decision the supervisor makes on this matter. If you have any questions concerning this matter, please contact me.
Madam Chair, you're going to take, at the end of this segment, comments relative to this?
You know, what I'd like to do is to pause, just to kind of review, Michael, in the sense that, just to kind of bring us back to full circle here, is that the last meeting, we had asked for a copy of Ms. Delai's, her previous superintendent contract. We also asked for a copy of the separation agreement. We did receive a redacted version of that, and then in addition, we had an invitation to the school committee chair, who has a scheduled conflict, which is understandable. And then also, the public information request through Superintendent Benton. There's a couple of factors here I just wanted to point out. I believe what we received for information is what we're going to, in fact, receive. So in terms of getting a summary of comments, questions, the actual nature of the discussion in executive session, I don't, I'm not of the opinion that we're going to get any real transcript of that, other than potentially, as a board requesting the executive session minutes when they're available for release. That's what I've gleaned from all of this fact-finding exercise that we've done, either during this meeting and then post-meeting. So that's, this information that we have right now is what I believe we will have moving forward, with the exception of requesting the executive session minutes, just to be candid with you.
So I think what you said is, you may well be right, because obviously, it would have been nice to have seen the chairperson to sit here and just ask us, and we could ask some questions, but obviously, and I understand she had prior commitment, but why not extend an invitation? I would like to make comment, why not extend an invitation at the next meeting for her to come? It's obviously that they gave us everything that we pretty much would be looking for. But, you know, the bottom line is, I mean, they can, you know, send us what they want, and they can make any comment they want, but I don't think this issue is going to be forgotten. I mean, you know, we get this, and all we do is get all these black lines. You know, we know about the financial agreement, you know, but yet, they sent us all these black lines, and with all the attention that this has received in the media, that's all we do, is get these black lines. That's all we receive, and, you know, all we see is the financial, and we already knew that. The school committee may be able to hide behind these black lines, but they're not going to be able to hide behind the taxpayers and the voters who foot the bill in this community, and we got to shell out almost $125,000 relative to this agreement that they did, relative to the superintendent, and put aside the drunk driving, and put aside her bringing back Mr. Alteri, you know, who, at the time, had his issue. She brought him back, and, you know, we lost a lot of department heads, we lost a lot of teachers. I know I said this before, you know, and I believe it's because of her style of management. She was nothing short of a bully. You know, when she took over the superintendent's position, all the employees that were stationed in the Roman houses, gone, with the exception of the business manager. And I understand, you're right, Madam Chair, that this is pretty much that we're all going to get, but it would be wonderful to extend the invitation to the chairperson to at least come and talk to us. I mean, they have at least that duty and obligation to us, I believe, to do that. You know, once again, there's no magic credit card out there, and when she retires, we have to suck up a whole, full year of her retirement for the rest of her life, even though she didn't work the full year here at the town. Excuse me, I just got a little sore throat this week, you know, and, you know, I bring that for it. You know, I mean, I'd happy to make a motion, and I agree, Madam Chair. This is probably all we're going to get, and that's it. I don't think they want to even come here, you know, but they do have an obligation to the taxpayers and the voters in this community to respond to. That's the buzz out there, the superintendent, this money. I mean, I'm in market basket three times a week. I'm around, like many of you folks here. That's all I'm hearing, about what a shame that we got to pay all this money to this woman, you know, and you hear it, you know, but I understand that, you know, they've made obligations and, you know, and we're moving forward. But, you know, I would love for us to extend another invitation to the chairperson to come here. If she chooses not to come, then so be it, you know, and maybe, we're not going to be here for another month, so maybe she could find time to come here. I think they owe at least a duty to that, and I agree with Mr. Kyra. He brought that up a long time ago, and if it wasn't for him bringing that up, I don't know of a conversation that we've had, but I give credit to Kevin Kyra for actually looking in the warrant. And I said, the last two times, I didn't vote for the warrant only because it was a protest and I was not happy with it, but I did keep true to my word, I did vote for the warrant this evening to pay the bills. You know, at least they should show a little honesty to come to us. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
So are you making a motion at this time?
I'd be happy, Madam Chair, if we can make a motion to extend the invitation to the chairperson or to the entire school committee if they choose to come to the board at our next upcoming meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, further discussion, I think. I guess it's on that motion specifically, isn't it?
Yes, please.
No, I'll refrain from discussing on the motion. I do want to chat, but I guess it wouldn't be relative to the motion specifically.
I'll talk a little bit on the motion. I do agree that this is somewhat of a conclusion, in the sense where we have the financial information, but looking at the information that we received, you know, just looking at the contract in the first line, the agreement made on the ninth day of May of 2014 between the school committee for the town of Wilmington. When I read that, for the town of Wilmington, and then I read the response from the chairman of the school committee, that it's the school's committee's statutory responsibility, it's between the school committee and the former superintendent, and then I refer back to that first line, for the town of Wilmington. I just think that they need to come in and justify their decisions as to what, as to what they made, how they made it. You know, it would be nice for a little explanation of the rationale behind it. Was it, could they have just terminated the individual for just cause? As it says in the contract, that's a possibility. Why didn't they do that? Maybe there was a reason why they didn't do it. You know, what is the reason that they wanted to pay her her full salary to the end of the year, plus with benefits? Did they talk to legal counsel? What type of information did legal counsel give them? Did legal counsel say to them, put in a clause that no one voids this contract if she gets another position? You know, it's signed, it's done, but it would be nice if they explained to the town of Wilmington and the residents how they came about to this decision in making it. And that's all. We're not out to, you know, to get to anybody that people may, oh, you're out to get to someone, you're out. No, we just want a decision as to how they came to this, you know, for us to put it away. The executive session minutes, now that this has basically come to a conclusion, I would like to request, I know that there's a motion right now, but I would like to request that our town manager get the executive session minutes of that time. And I do like to note that when this took place, I think in October, finally, they gave this to the town accountant, which was nice of them to do that. It took a little bit of pushing for them to get it to him, but it should have been done right away. But, you know, it's, as I said, they signed off the agreement. It would be nice to find out their thought process behind them giving her, you know, this type of contract extension. I mean, I would have just, if they wanted to do that, they could have said, stay on in your position, sit behind the desk, and don't touch a thing. That's your job, and pay her. But they decided not to do that, and I don't know why. They decided not to terminate her, and I don't know why that either. And they should come up with some explanation.
So just to bring it back around, we do have a motion on the floor regarding an invitation for another meeting. We do have a second, and I seconded for discussion, so if we can just stay on that particular motion and keep the comments to that, yes?
Sure, Madam Chair. I may, I just want to make sure, I'm not opposed to having them come in, but I just want to make sure that we're not potentially, perhaps this is a question, for town council in any risk or any way, shape or form, going to violate the agreement. I would hate, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I hate to see this snowball into costing the town any more than it already has. Certainly, we can all agree it's disappointing, but I don't want to put anybody at risk breaching the contract that was signed by potentially having them answer any questions that might breach that.
That is, you know, certainly a legitimate question. I don't think inviting the, either the chair or members of the school committee in and of itself is a problem. the chair or members of the school committee in and of itself is a problem. I think they, one would imagine, will receive counsel from their own attorney as to what they can and cannot say. And I think, quite frankly, that is one of the challenges with this whole issue. I think there are some legitimate questions that have been posed about the basis for making the decision that was made. From the limited information that I have and just being familiar with personnel matters, when you're dealing with a personnel matter, there are limitations in terms of what can be made public. And, you know, I guess the big question from a legal perspective is, to what degree can information that was considered during that executive session be made public without potentially bringing on some kind of a claim that Mary Delai might pursue? And I don't have the answer to that.
You know, I think the manager said it best. I think if the pleasure of this board is to extend that invitation, I think we should proceed in that direction if there's an affirmative vote and it carries the majority to do that. And then the school committee has their team to be able to effectively, you know, make that decision. You know, from my standpoint in the brief conversations that I've had, is that, you know, I've talked with Joanne Benton, I've talked with Jeff, I've talked with Julie Bressard, and I am of the understanding that everybody wants to cooperate and get this information out there. However, at the same time, they've been legally advised that they are not to speak about the contents of their executive session. I have not spoken with every member of the school committee. I believe that they're heeding to the legal advice that they were given, and I believe that they are of the mindset that their hands are tied. That's what I'm hearing. In terms of executive session minutes being released when the time is right to do so, I think some of the information that we're looking for in terms of the backend narrative points, that these comments and questions are well-placed. I mean, you know, as I said in the previous meeting, you know, there may have been requests for the moon and the stars, and it was backed down to this, and this is what they feel was the very best option. But we don't have the backstory to it, and neither did the residents at home. And, you know, I've received a lot of comments, criticisms. I can't really get through Market Basket without having it brought up, so I can, you know, appreciate that. And, you know, I'm trying to work as a chair, in addition to being a taxpaying resident and a selectman on this board, to try and satisfy the full complement of this board to the extent that I can, and I know the manager has as well. So I, I'll support the motion that's been put forward. And, you know, each member can vote, you know, accordingly, and we can continue to navigate through this, you know, as best we can.
Just quickly, yeah, just relative to the motion, the last motion I made was specifically for the chairperson. This motion is specifically chairperson and any member of the school committee to come to this meeting.
I have stuff to say, but it's not specific to whether or not to vote on this motion.
So let's call for the vote for the invitation. All those in favor? Unanimous, okay? Any other general discussion?
If I may, yes. So it's on this point. You know, the executive session minutes, Ms. O'Connell, you just mentioned when it's deemed appropriate to release that. What are the criteria for determining when executive session minutes get released? I mean, to me, it seems like there's a contract between the two parties that has been inked by both parties. When we have an executive session, you know, when we had executive session with Jeff, as soon as we inked that contract, it became public record, did it not? So I'm not sure what the criteria are for making those executive session minutes public. And is it at the, is it the conclusion of the arrangement that they have with her, I wonder? I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like Jeff to answer that too. But just to be clear on this, is that I had talked about executive session minutes, you've talked about executive session minutes. And just to be clear, when I'm looking for executive session minutes, I'm looking for any meeting that the school committee had pertaining to this executive session-wise. So for example, they met last week in executive session for a personnel issue. Was that relative to these requests? I would want executive session minutes for any meeting pertaining to Superintendent Delai, not just that particular night.
That are, yeah, I guess, again, that are able to be released by virtue of whatever the nature of those conversations are.
Correct.
So that was one bullet, and I had that in my head even before we kind of got going here. I also want to be real cautious, and I think we are being cautious, not to injure or somehow fracture what I think has historically been a very positive, mutually beneficial working relationship between our respective boards. And so in as much as, you know, this is a controversial and it's a sizable sum of money, and we at the top of the totem pole, as it were, have the authority, or at least the inclination to oversee and understand how these expenditures are coming about and how they're, the thought process, what is the thought process that went into it. At the end of the day, we all have to work collaboratively and play nice in the sandbox. And I just, I want to be cautious and careful, and I guess I say this now to the school committee folks that are listening, hopefully, it's my intent, not at all, to be adversarial and confrontational, but rather just to get a better comprehensive understanding of the nuances, to the extent that it's legal and possible to understand what went into that decision-making process. You know, it is a sizable amount of money. But Judy, you just said it, and it's important. You know, I think this notion of transparency, you know, we want to instill and reinforce a sense of confidence among our residents and among our population that we have a transparent government, that we're not doing things in back rooms and having quiet conversations with our side deals. So this is one of those opportunities now where, to the extent that it's legal and possible, we want to be as transparent as we possibly can. And I think that, you know, having this conversation among our respective boards will go a long way towards that. I don't fault the school committee for coming up with their final conclusion and with this arrangement with Ms. Delai. I don't like the number, but I don't know what else was on the table. I don't know what they were facing. Maybe that was the best number they could get. And so we just don't know that. So my knee-jerk reaction was, oh, my God, that's a, what a deal. You know, that's not very good for the town. On the other hand, maybe it is good for the town in the context of the other potential options. So I'm trying to keep an open mind about it, and I want to really give some leeway to the school committee who are in a situation where they probably had to wrestle with a number of scenarios and came up with the one that they did. You know, listen, we've been through it ourselves, not too long ago. And I'm happy to see Jeff sitting here among us. You know, negotiations can sometimes be tough and challenging. And, you know, they had a challenging negotiation experience, as did we a few months ago. Theirs certainly ended differently than ours, but we all know that those negotiations can be challenging. So let's, you know, I'm going to enter into these conversations, if they come next meeting, with a very open mind, and I hope that my colleagues will join me with that. That is all. Thank you.
To that point, Michael, I mean, it was stated the last meeting, I said the very similar thing, where, you know, we have had a very cooperative relationship with the school department, and I'd like to see that continue. You know, I do believe that we're all well-intended volunteers on our respective boards and committees. I've been in those shoes, serving on that committee. You all have served on this board for an extended period of time. The key thing is, is that this isn't about the people or the personalities. If we took every member of this board and replaced it with new members, and every member of that committee and replaced it, I'd be asking some of the very same questions. It's not about the people and the personalities and the titles, it's about the subject matter and about the fact that I'm a guest in the seat, and I feel like I'm responsible to be asking the questions that are in the minds and living rooms of residents here right in town that aren't here tonight to be able to ask that. But they've made it a point to contact us as members of this board privately in a lot of instances, because they don't want to release their name publicly. And I feel that we do have a fiduciary responsibility in a transparency piece. And we're in the people business. It may be at times, you know, challenging, and we're subject to a lot of criticism. You know, just in the community boards today, we got hammered on the community boards all day regarding some of the recent, with the tax rate and Fourth of July discussions and things of that nature. So I, you know, we get hit with this every day. And so, you know, I want to be clear to any school committee member that's listening, to any resident at home that's listening, this is not a personal attack. This is seeking to find out information, to understand in a very generalized manner as to how we evolved to the place that we're at. I'm sensing that this board isn't satisfied with just the empirical data. They want to know that we got, how this decision was derived. And, you know, we're trying to get you that information, but it's been a process. So I cannot express enough how I want to continue a cooperating relationship with the school committee, while at the same time, you know, even a generalized narrative about the situation and how it unfolded would be very helpful. I sense the reason why we haven't received it is because they're being legally advised not to provide it. So I'd like to, once again, give them somewhat of the benefit of the doubt. And, you know, I wish I had something more material to state, but that's what I believe to be the case.
Agreed, thank you.
Okay, to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So next is the correspondence, Jeff, from Mary Jane Handy.
Yes, the next item under correspondence is from the Department of Revenue. They have reviewed the Board of Selectmen's decision in terms of the tax classification and have confirmed that classification, as you know, there was a shift proposed for the CIP. So the rates of $14.45 per thousand for the residential rate is confirmed, and $32.46 per thousand for commercial, industrial, and personal property is confirmed. Next under correspondence is a letter directed to me, to Judy O'Connell as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and to Edward Loud, Chair of the Board of Appeals. And this is from Ron and Susan Croker, Crocker? Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that right. And it reads as follows, "The 2017 proposal for a carnival submitted by the Fourth of July Committee is almost identical to the proposal of 2016, which was declined by the Board of Appeals. In fact, their current 2017 proposal advertised in the Wilmington Town Crier and sent to the Butters bears no likeness to the family-oriented one that was submitted by the town of Wilmington and approved by the Board of Appeals. The town council defined a substantial and material change as a reduction of the original proposal by both hours and days of operation, allowing the town to submit a reapplication in 2016. Fourth of July Committee's current request is one less day, but five more hours of operation, ending at 11:00 p.m. on three nights, is clearly not meeting the criteria defined above. This was additionally clarified by Mr. Barletta at the Board of Appeals meeting on 4/13/2016, who stated a 25% reduction of hours and 15% reduction of rides was substantial. Please submit this letter to town council to verify that the Fourth of July Committee must wait another 12 months until their 2017 plan is virtually the same as the one submitted by the town of Wilmington, by the town for 2016. Thank you, Ron and Susan Croker."
So Jeff, can you give me some, give us some guidance on this? Obviously want to be responsive to a resident concern. I have not, I don't have a copy of the town proposal from last year or the proposal from the Fourth of July Committee for this year. I'm thinking that it may be helpful for each board member to have a copy of those for reference, as I would suspect that this board is going to be called upon throughout this process, if necessary, to get through this. I looked online, I didn't see anything. I tried to look at some of the hours from last year. As an example, I saw some on the Fourth of July website. Can you just clarify to me, last year, the majority of the carnival times ended when? As one example?
Most of the days, it ended at 9:00 p.m. The night of the fireworks was the extended hours.
Extended hours.
Until 10:00.
And just, you know, without, you know, I understand if you don't have the information in front of you, but in terms of the hours that are being proposed for this proposal going forward, what do the hours look like? What are the highlights on the rides? You know, to the extent that you can comment, you know, to say if this is or isn't a substantial difference?
Well, you know, I can comment to the extent that I have looked preliminarily at the application. I would note that Scott Grant is here this evening from the July Fourth Committee. It may be most appropriate for Scott to answer the question. But from what I gather in looking at the application, the latest the event goes is 10 o'clock on certain nights. But I would suggest perhaps...
Scott, I'd like to recognize you in the audience, if I may, and I apologize if I'm spotting you, but since you are here, can you help with that a little bit, please?
Absolutely.
So Scott Grant, Fourth of July Committee Chair.
Absolutely. With all respect to the letter writers, I'm not sure where the information's coming from. I have the town's application from last year, I have our application from this year, and I also have the hours for both applications, the days for both applications, and the hours and days for the one we submitted last year that was denied. The first application we submitted that was denied called for operation Wednesday and Thursday from 6:00 to 10:00, and then Friday from 6:00 to 11:00, Saturday from 12:00 to 11:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 11:00, for a total of 34 hours. Let's see your writing, so I'll let you catch up.
Thanks.
The town's application, which was subsequently approved, called for four days of operation, Thursday from 5:00 to 9:00, Friday from 5:00 to 9:00, Saturday from 12:00 to 10:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 8:00, for a total of 25 hours.
Okay.
Our application, which is available at the Board of Appeals office, calls for four days of operation, Thursday from 5:00 to 9:00, Saturday, excuse me, Friday from 5:00 to 9:00. So those two are exactly the same as the towns from last year. Saturday from 12:00 to 10:00, exactly the same as the towns from last year, and Sunday from 1:00 to 10:00, which would be the fireworks night, for a total of 27 hours. So the two-hour difference between the town's proposal and our proposal is 8:00 to 10:00 on Sunday night, the fireworks night. But does represent a seven-hour reduction from our denied application and a one-hour reduction in days, excuse me, a one-day reduction in days.
And two more hours than the town's application?
Correct.
Okay. And then in terms of from the rides configuration, to the extent that you can comment?
We submitted the identical numbers to what the town's application that was approved last year stated.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Forgive me for not knowing the answer to this. I feel like I ought to, given what we went through last year. Who is the determining, the determinant? What are the determining factors that elevate something to being a substantially different presentation or application? In other words, what rises, what rose the town's application to be considered different and substantially, substantially different enough from the original Fourth of July Committee's application? And so what is that, what is that threshold?
Well, it's not, as I understand it, it's not black and white. I would say, in the case of last year, if we had submitted an application that took the number, the hours of operation from 35 to 32, and perhaps the number of rides, and I don't recall offhand the number of rides that the July Fourth Committee had initially submitted, but reduced them by one or two, that would probably not be substantial in the eyes of the Board of Appeals. You know, the fact, in that particular circumstance, that we reduced the hours from 34 to 25, and rides down to 12, I believe it was, you know, was substantial.
But the benchmark that has to be compared against is the original Fourth of July Committee's application, the first one last year, right? That's the one that we're comparing against that failed.
Yes.
Right? So any application that comes in now for, what, a two-year period, I think? Forgive me, I'm mixed up a little bit. So I think for two years, so we were the applicant last year, the Fourth of July Committee now is this year, but their application has to be substantial. now is this year, but their application has to be substantially different than the one that was denied to them last year. And as Mr. Grant just indicated, it looks to me, except for two hours, to be effectively, to me, it would rise to the level of being substantially different from their first application that was rejected, and very similar to the application that we, that the town put forth. So, it would be the Board of Appeals that would ultimately make the decision as to whether or not they agree with my assertion of that?
They would ultimately have to make a determination that it was substantial enough to warrant consideration.
Okay.
One other key question to that for you, Scott, is that on the denial application, can you talk about your ride configuration for that denial app compared to the identical proposal? Take me through that again. I'm a...
Excuse me, when you say configuration, you mean number of rides?
Number of rides.
If memory serves, our '16 application was for, our denied application called for 15 rides.
So, 15 rides, and then now you're proposing 12?
The town's subsequent application, which we've mirrored, called for 12 to 14.
Okay.
It may have been more, if memory serves, it was 15.
So, we're talking about a potential one-to-three-ride differential, and then you're talking about...
I can't speak for the Board of Appeals and...
Seven-hour difference.
Yeah, I can't speak for the Board of Appeals, but the factors they have to consider in granting a special permit for a carnival is reasonableness of hours of operation and number of days. So, those were the factors that the town addressed in its application, and again, which we've mirrored this year. To your question, Mr. Shampoo, about substantial or significant difference, we've been advised that with the town's approval, receipt of an approval last year, we don't have to go through that process again. However, I have in my presentation to the board, my initial submission to the Board of Appeals, told them, if they don't agree with that, please submit it to the planning board for that determination.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's nuanced, so I appreciate that.
Yes, can you please say your name and address?
I'm Suzanne Croker.
Hi.
And I apologize if my letter said 11:00 o'clock. It was to be 10:00 o'clock. That's a typographical on my part. However, what I have is the legal notice that was in the paper from the Fourth of July, and that's the only information that I had, that said that their carnival is going to go 12:00 to 10:00 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and 1:00 to 10:00 on Sunday, which is somewhat larger than what Mr. Hall had in his RFP last year, which was 5:00 to 9:00 on Thursday and Friday, noon to 10:00, and then 1:00 to 8:00. And I was just going to respectfully ask this board to consider resubmitting Mr. Hall's proposal, which was a very family-friendly carnival. And, you know, you know, I, last year, that I was very, very fearful of what was going to happen in my front yard. And I was very pleased with what came forward last year. And I, that's why I was looking forward to seeing the same kind of proposal. And again, my apologies for my letter typographical, but I do have, and the only information that I've seen is what was in the paper. So, if there's something different, then I have not seen that.
Understood.
If the paper said 12:00 to 10:00, you see on Thursday and Friday? Glasses in the office, I have no prayer reading that. If it says 12:00 to 10:00 on Thursday and Friday, it's a typo either from this building or the paper. That's not what the application says.
Understood. So, we've got two typographs there. Okay. Well, I think, you know, the points are duly noted from all parties that have spoken here tonight, and I think the concern for the hours of operation, I think, you know, not speaking for Mr. Grant, who's here, but I think he's mindful of all of the abutters in a very sincere way to try and make this be a successful event. We've been having conversations as a town and as a board with Scott and his team previously. A couple of months ago, we've had them in proactively as we prepared for July. So, certainly keep the lines of communication open with the manager's office and, you know, wanted to work with Jeff here to bring some of this out to light now, rather than just read the letter into the record, because I think we could, you know, dissolve some issues just by having some candid conversation here openly. It's not a hearing, but I just want to, I just wanted to work to get right at the subject matter so that you weren't left wondering as you leave here tonight. Did you have anything else, Scott, that you wanted to add?
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick thank you. You know, I'm under the weather a little bit, and Jeff, correct me if my math's wrong. When it was denied, it was five days of 34 hours, and it was denied. And then the town came up with their scenario of 25 hours. And then, I believe I'm correct, and then the new scenario is 27 hours. I'll be honest, I really don't have an issue with that. You know, we're looking for two more hours, and it's on fireworks night, correct? I don't see it being a big issue. I know this has been a tradition that's been going, going on for years and years and years, but I would imagine those two hours, it's not going to make a huge difference relative to that. That's what I say. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say it. And, you know, I do support what they want to do, and it's been a tradition that's been happening in this town for a long time, long time. And I can understand your concern, ma'am.
No, and I understand what I was reading, what was in the paper versus what is actually being done. So, again, that's, that works both ways, I think.
And hopefully you'll be there supporting it.
That was last year.
And I just wanted to clarify with Scott. You said Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, that's, we're starting in June, then, June 29th?
Yes.
Okay. And ending on the 2nd.
Correct.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have correspondence from the town clerk. Sharon George, pursuant to Chapter 1, Section 9 of the Revised Inhabitants Bylaws of the Town of Wilmington, review of bylaws is supposed to take place every 10 years. The last time the bylaws were reviewed was in 2006. As stated in the bylaws, a committee will need to be appointed to undertake this important review. Next, under correspondence, I have a memo to the board where I outline what I'm proposing in terms of a committee. The last committee was appointed by my predecessor, and there was, I believe, nine individuals on the committee, including a liaison from the Board of Selectmen. I'm proposing to appoint Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director, Sharon George, Town Clerk, Robert Richter, who's the Deputy Police Chief. And then, I would like to offer the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to bring forward, each bring forward one name to recommend for appointment, perhaps if I could receive that information by, by before the next meeting, which is on January 9th. And then also, if the board isn't so inclined to consider designating an individual from this board to serve as liaison to that committee. I want to get them up to speed and going, so to speak, early 2017, based upon my review of the prior efforts. It usually takes about a year with meetings typically happening monthly or thereabouts. And if that timeline can be honored, I would expect that by the close of calendar 2017 or early 2018, that this committee would have recommendations on any revisions to the inhabitant bylaws that they may deem appropriate. And then those recommendations could be brought forward for consideration at a 2018 annual town meeting.
Now, Jeff, just as a point of clarification, are there any other, if there are people that people have identified that serve in any other capacity, are there any other limitations? So, for example, do they not, do they have to not be on any other board or committee in town, that a town-related committee? So, in other words, you couldn't pick somebody from the Finance Committee, for example, to be doing this, per se, or is that...
The Finance Committee may, I would want to check on that first, but as far as I know, in terms of other committee members, I don't see any limitation on that.
Just wanted to put that out there in case anybody needed to know that.
I'm sorry, what's the process, or what do you see the process being for identifying whether or not someone from this board would be a liaison? And if so, how will we go about making that determination?
Well, I think it would be a discussion for the board to have, and if there was, you know, someone that was nominated or interested in serving in that role, you could make that known, and then the other members could take a vote to designate that person as a liaison.
Sophia, question, Michael? I mean, we, in other instances, we've had to kind of recruit someone here to be part of something. So, I mean, I think if anyone has a desire to, to serve in this capacity, I would let Jeff know, and through chair conversations with setting the agenda, he can, you know, let me know that people have expressed a desire to be on that. Would I assume that the meetings would happen at night, Jeff?
Yes, the meetings would happen at night. Sharon George, the town clerk, has indicated to me that she already has a number of different items on the docket, if you will, that she would propose to this committee to consider. But certainly, we would get a copy of the inhabitant bylaws out to the committee members, and I would expect that the, that the individual members would take a look at those bylaws and then make their own judgments as to what modifications might be appropriate.
Sharon?
So, between now and January 9th, anyone who has an interest, let you know, and then we'll bring that up on the, on the next meeting?
Yes.
Beautiful.
The next item on the agenda is a memo from Valerie Gingrich. This is with regard to a petition zoning article, and I'll just highlight. So, November 2nd, we received a petition warrant article from Derek Santini, and he is seeking to rezone a property at 278 Lowell Street owned by John Forrest from general business to residential 20. The property is approximately 2.25 acres, and it is the property next to a Burger King that currently has the sheds on it. Under the Mass General laws, there's a requirement for a public hearing to take place within 65 days from receipt of the petition. This hearing has to be conducted by the planning board, and so the planning board is going to be considering this petition article at their meeting on January 3rd. Notice to abutters will be issued, and then there is some expectation that this hearing may be continued to the planning board and Finance Committee public hearing that takes place on March 21st. And then, a planning board would need to make a recommendation within 21 days from the close of the hearing. And the, a town meeting would need to address this petition article within six months from the close of the planning board hearing. Next is correspondence memorandum from Paul Looney, the town engineer, just providing a, an update on the Yentile project, and the work is substantially complete. There is some remaining electrical plumbing and finish work. There's a door that needs to be replaced that the contractor was improperly installed or not the right size. The contractor is, will be doing that in the next, all of this work is expected to take place within the next couple of weeks. And then the remaining work is some landscaping that will need to be done in the spring of next year.
And Jeff, just, this is a matter of disclosure, I had had conversations with you regarding Cross Street, you know, as, as part of, would that be separate from this? Or would this be something that you'd be working to discuss with Paul and, and Mike Woods in terms of the paving?
I've had discussions with Mike Woods, Public Works Director, about paving Cross Street, and that would be on the docket for next spring. You know, the, it's going to be weather-dependent, obviously. Hopefully, the Mother Nature will cooperate, and we won't be having snow in April.
Just wanted to share that with, with fellow board members, that, you know, we had looked at Cross Street as a kind of an add-on after we've had the beautiful park and the side parking near it. Made sense to look at that small stretch of Cross Street to consider paving that. So, I had asked Jeff to look into that, so I'm pleased that they're considering doing that. In addition, just while we're on the subject matters, I'll be meeting with Jeff and Kevin and Karen Campbell to be discussing in the January timeframe about a grand opening event for the town to properly open up the facility with a Wilmington spirit-type day of some kind. Some more details on that.
May I ask a quick question? Not to spot you, but I feel, I think, I can't remember one of you I've asked before. The Yentile Farm sign that's on the corner, is that, I think, I haven't checked in the last couple of days, is it still there?
It is, yeah, it is still there. And I've had some conversations with Shelley Newhouse, who has a relationship with some of the family members there, to find out, you know, if there's any interest on their part to, you know, do something with that. So, that is a work in progress.
Very good.
Thank you. Next, under correspondence, is the submittal that went into the Surface Transportation Board, their Office of Environmental Analysis. The draft, the document was actually authored by Dan Deutsch from Town Council's office, but there were a number of people that were very instrumental in, in terms of putting this together, a number of departments, Mike Woods, Valerie Gingrich, actually Libby Sabunjan, who's on the Board of Health, and there's others as well, Shelley Newhouse. We had assistance from GeoInsight, our geotechnical consultant, and also, we hired an engineering, traffic engineering firm, TEC, that provided comments with regard to traffic. So, the intent of this comment document was to address the scoping document that had been prepared by OEA. That scoping document was really the parameters for evaluating this project, and so the extensive comments that we submitted were intended to make sure that when OEA prepares the draft environmental impact statement, that they're looking at all of the appropriate issues that we believe are important. The next document we would expect to see, but we don't have a timeline yet on this, is a draft environmental impact statement that will outline what OEA deems to be the impacts and to what measure New England Transrail can mitigate those impacts, and then we will be commenting on, on that as well. Next is correspondence from Ford Jewel Drive condominium associates with regard to comments to the Office of Environmental Analysis, and I'll read them into the record. "To whom it may concern, as trustees of commercial building located at Ford Jewel Drive that directly borders the Olin property site, we collectively have many concerns about the selling of the Olin property," in parentheses, "a superfund site," "to New England Transrail for a transfer site. Our building has 14 occupied units, and we are very concerned that the reuse of the site could disrupt existing toxins and could contaminate our property, thus endangering human life and decreasing our property values. We would like to note the fact that EPA has not completed their investigation of the property and has not issued any, quote, 'land use controls,' end quote, that set restrictions on how a site can be used or establish long-term public health warnings. We, the trustees of Ford Jewel Drive Condominium Association, would request the Town of Wilmington, Wilmington Health Department, Office of Environmental Analysis, and New England Transrail to consider these concerns and not move forward with this project. Respectfully yours, trustee Robert Mallett, Steve Cornier, and Eric Timmons." Next, under correspondence, is a letter that was directed to our... Next, under correspondence, is a letter that was directed to our congressional delegation. This is with regard to New England Trans Rail, and I'll just read this, actually, yeah, I'll read this into the record. So, this one is directed to our two senators and our congressman. "As you know, based upon recent comments filed on November 29, 2016, with the Surface Transportation Board, Finance Docket 39797, Subdocket 1, the town is extremely concerned about the very real prospect of New England Trans Rail LLC obtaining authorization from the STB to acquire, develop, and operate rail infrastructure on the existing Olin Chemical Site, 51 Eames Street in Wilmington. Their intentions are to develop a significant rail transloading hub on an existing site that has been declared by the Environmental Protection Agency to be a National Priority List site. The superfund site has not been fully evaluated, nor have options for site remediation been presented for public review and comment. This site has served as the origin of contamination that led to the required shutdown of five of the town's nine public drinking water wells, and a site that has nearly 300 chemical constituents present in the soil and groundwater, including N-nitro-sodium dimethylamine, or NDMA, a human carcinogen. The fact that this site is under serious consideration by an agency whose principal mission is to promote rail transportation for intensive use as a rail hub is simply irresponsible and a public health threat. Wilmington's 22,375 residents believe that they have endured enough from the impacts related to the superfund site. These impacts will continue for generations. A final cleanup plan must be established before redevelopment of the site for future use. Wilmington's Board of Selectmen, as the community's elected representatives invite you, their elected representatives in Washington, DC, to attend one of their upcoming meetings to discuss this very real threat, this community, with this community, and the steps that can be taken to ensure that New England Trans Rail's petition to the STB is not granted. The Board of Selectmen meet on the second, fourth Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. I look forward to hearing from your office to schedule a time for you to personally hear from the board members about this misguided proposal. Thank you for your attention to this matter of critical importance." We have, let's see, okay. There is correspondence, or just a memo, actually, from me to the board regarding communication that I had with Senator Markey's office. Kate Matchett, who is the regional director, confirmed that the senator had received the selectman's letter regarding NET. This was the initial letter that went out, indicated that she would be meeting with representatives from the other offices within our congressional delegation to decide how to approach this, and she also expressed interest in attending a future selectman's meeting, and I would note that there is a meeting that the chair and I will be attending with the delegation. Next is correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the marijuana ballot question. The, it raises a number of concerns about the implementation of the ballot question that was passed most recently. Talks about deadlines that are far too short, give the state and local officials inadequate time to prepare for the administration of the law. Talks about preempting local control. Unregulated homegrown provisions could foster new black market. Inadequate tax revenue written into the statute, and the, this correspondence is an appeal to contact our legislators. I would also note, in addition to this correspondence, there's been some internal discussions with Valerie Gingrich and others, including town council, about what steps we can take to try to provide some measure of control about this law as it becomes implemented, and one of the considerations that we are looking at is whether there are measures that can be taken so that the areas zoned for this use would essentially be the same areas that are currently zoned for marijuana dispensaries. I would note that there's been at least two communities I'm aware of, and probably more, that have, either have or are in the process of passing moratoriums. I know the town of Ashland did that recently. I think Burlington is in the process of bringing that forward. It's unclear whether these moratoriums will actually have their intended result. That remains to be seen. Next is correspondence from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission. This came in late on Friday, I believe, and it's signed by the executive director, Michael Sweeney. The commission is, in accordance with Chapter 10, Section 27A, as amended, you are hereby notified that the following existing agent in your community will be sent an application in agreement to sell keynote-to-go product, and the specific entity is Quickmart, 206 Balladvale Road, Wilmington, Balladvale Street. As you know, we get these periodically, and the Board of Selectmen, if there are any objections to this, would have 21 days to make those objections known. I did receive correspondence, or an email from the police chief indicating, based upon his review, the installation of a keynote-to-go game at Quickmart located at 206 Balladvale in Wilmington would not pose an issue. So, in the absence of any concerns, the board does not need to take any action. Next is a letter from Dan Veerman. This was sent via email dated December 6th. I'll read it into the record. "Dear Mr. Hull, as you are aware, I am a member of the Wilmington Board of Appeals. It has just recently, it has just recently, and informed, just recently been informed, brought to my attention that the Fourth of July Committee will be applying for a special permit to locate the Fourth of July Carnival at the property known as the former Swain School Site at Middle Six Ave for this year's upcoming Independence Day celebration. This area is directly across the street from my residence at 131 Middle Six Ave, although I am not sure if I am technically a director abutter, I certainly may be, and clearly live within 300 feet of the area. I have previously contacted Town Council's office when this first became an issue, and spoke with attorney Lou Ross, who informed me that due to the proximity of my residence to the area in question, the safe course of conduct would be to recuse myself from hearing the committee's special permit application, since the director abutter would be presumed to have a financial interest in the matter. Although I do not believe the carnival would necessarily benefit or disadvantage me financially due to the location of my house to the area, I was advised that the presumption of a financial interest is a matter of law, if not fact. He advised me to communicate my conflict to my appointing authority, namely the Board of Selectmen, in that they have to, have on two previous occasions unanimously decided to waive my conflict after proper deliberation and decision. Toward that end, please forward this communication to the Board of Selectmen. Should you decide to entertain this issue, should they decide to entertain this issue at their next meeting, deliberate and take any action." So, as you know, this has come up now previously. I would just note that the last time this was brought forward was ironically a year ago, and the board at that time took the following vote, that the Board of Selectmen determined that Daniel Veerman's ownership of the property near the carnival site is not as substantial, so substantial as to likely affect him from impartially acting on the special permit application submitted by the Fourth of July Committee. That was a vote taken on December 14th of 2015.
So, next item is the board to consider, which is the request regarding to disclosure in accordance with Chapter 268A, Section 20B, relative to an application for a special permit by the Fourth of July Committee. Questions, comments, or a motion regarding this request by Mr. Veerman?
I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Is Mr. Veerman indicating, I'm reading it again now several times, that he was advised by our town attorney, Lou Ross, that due to the proximity of his residence, that the safe course of conduct would be to recuse himself from hearing the committee's special permit application? But I don't see him indicating that he intends to do that. It looks like he's asking us to potentially take the vote like we did last year that would allow him to hear the case, but if we were to not take that vote, would he then be recusing himself based on that recommendation? We don't know that.
We, I don't know that for certain, but my expectation is that he is indicating, absent a vote by the Board of Selectmen that would absolve him, if you will, of any potential conflict, he would not, based upon advice of council, be prepared to go forward and serve on that particular matter.
And just to be clear, neither Mr. Loud nor Mr. Barletta would be in conflict in hearing this application this year, because the Fourth of July Committee's proposal will not include a specific contract, or because they will not have engaged or hired a contractor at that point. Is that fair?
Well, in the case of Mr. Barletta, he stepped down from the
Right, I'm sorry.
July 4th Committee, so he, that was his conflict a few years ago. He's not been on the committee now for a couple of years. In the case of Mr. Loud, the issue that had, drew a potential conflict for him was that the business he's in, I guess they sell generators to entities, in some cases, that are involved in the carnival business. You're correct, that because there is no carnival vendor known at this point in time with the application going forward, it is, my understanding, he would not be conflicted.
So, the math, then, would be that there would be four members of the Board of Appeals that would be able to hear the case and make a, and make a vote. So, we would not necessarily need to free Mr. Veerman to take a vote, as we have needed him in the past, and I'm grateful that he was willing and able to step up and participate in those votes when we needed him to do so, when the other members were conflicted out. But in this particular case, we don't have members that are conflicted out, so we don't need him to step into that role. Is that a fair assessment of the situation?
Yes.
Thank you.
On that same track, in the past, when Ed has recused himself, is it more because of the fact that the application went in with Fiesta Shows as part of it, and it was known upfront where now they're leaving, they're going to go out to bid, or are they, I haven't seen their application, so is Fiesta, I'm asking a question just to get it out there, but I haven't seen their application this time around, so I, I'm not privy to the specifics. Is Fiesta named in their proposal?
I, it's my understanding they are not named in the proposal, that they, that currently the July 4th Committee has not identified a carnival vendor.
Do you know if they're going to take multiple bids, have they said?
I do not know. I would want to confirm with Scott Durant on that.
I would feel comfortable taking a vote as it, as they did last year with the same, same wording that was done. I don't know if you want to, to allow Mr. Veerman to serve on the Board of Appeals for this one topic.
So, the language last year, the vote was that the Board of Selectmen determined that Dan, Daniel Veerman's ownership of the property near the carnival site is not so substantial as to likely affect him from impartially acting on the special permit application submitted by the Fourth of July Committee.
So, is it proper to make a motion to that effect? At this time, is that what we're looking for?
Yes, that is.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second? I'll second it for discussion.
I have discussion. I'm sorry, it looks like Mike, Mr. McCoy, please.
Yeah, I'll say something in discussion. If you're going to call a vote, Madam Chair, I think you have the right to do that. In all fairness, I gave Mr. Veerman the benefit of the doubt last year. I voted for him with my blessings, and there was no way in good consciousness I could vote for the man again, because he, I felt that he could have, I felt that he was going to demonstrate fairness relative to the hearing, and after watching those meetings on TV, he was far from fear. In fact, he lobbied against it, and I just really can't bring myself to vote for him again, so I'd be in the negative in voting for that. I just can't bring myself to vote in favor of him, that's all.
Any other discussion, yes?
If I may, real quickly, one thing, I just want to, if I may, with all due respect, Mr. McCoy, it's Veerman. I know that Mr. Veerman is sensitive about the pronunciation of his name. That being said, I guess I don't share necessarily the observations of Mr. McCoy of how Mr. Veerman handled himself last year, but that, notwithstanding, in this particular case this year, the reality of it is, we don't need Mr. Veerman to participate in this vote, as I just went through the explanation, I went through the nuances of all this to make sure I understood it correctly and that everyone else did, too. We have four members of the Board of Appeals that, under the circumstances, if Fiesta Shows is not named in the application, we have four members that can participate in this vote, and by virtue of that, we don't need to free Mr. Veerman up in order to participate in the vote. We have an attorney, our town attorney, who's made a recommendation that, under normal circumstances, it would be prudent for Mr. Veerman, because of his proximity to the property, to recuse himself from participating in this vote. We have asked Mr. Veerman, and we've authorized Mr. Veerman in the past, to participate in the vote, because we needed him to participate, and I believe to my heart of hearts that he was able to do so impartially, and to do so in his best efforts to protect the interests of the town in the way that he believed he was doing it. I made it clear then, I'll make it clear again today, that I didn't agree with his assertions last year, and he and I went on record together as having a difference of opinion on that. That all being pushed aside, we don't need Mr. Veerman on this vote, and because there is a proximity issue, and we've been advised by council that, under the circumstances where we don't need his vote, he should recuse himself, I would, I would not vote to authorize him to participate in this vote this year.
Madam Chair, if I may, just want to be clear on the motion that's presented here at the table. If we were to allow Mr. Veerman to vote on this, and then say Fiesta Shows was named in it, would there be a conflict for, say, Mr. Loud? We have no idea of knowing that, right, whether the bid would go to Fiesta Shows or to another carnival organization. So, I guess, I guess the better question would be, if, if we don't allow Mr. Veerman to participate, are then we putting the town at risk of, if Fiesta Shows is then given the bid, and then they would only have three votes?
They could extend it, right, and come back to us.
So, the, the assumption is that if the carnival operator is not known prior to the Board of Appeals taking the vote, that the process can go forward, and the individuals, even though in the case of Mr. Loud, his company may have had dealings with one of the carnival vendors in the past, if the vote is taken prior to having knowledge that one or more vendors are being, one or the other vendors are being hired, and I'm not sure how many are out there, that the conflict does not exist. If the, if it is known before the Board of Appeals takes their vote that a certain carnival vendor is the one that's being hired, and, and that, and his business has done, done business with that carnival vendor, then that is what creates the issue. I would just also note that the Board of Appeals, in order to grant this special permit, needs needs to vote four in favor for this to pass. So, if there's a five-member board hearing this case, then it could potentially be a four in favor and one opposed, and still prevail. If there's only four members of the Board of Appeals voting on this matter, then it would require unanimous consent or approval in order to prevail, just as a point of information.
I think that's an important point of information, because you don't necessarily know the timeline when the Fourth of July is going to have to be engaging with any particular carnival vendor, and if the Board of Appeals hearings don't play out to map exactly such that Ed Loud is guaranteed to not be in conflict at any given time. If history repeats itself, Fiesta Shows has a very high likelihood of potentially being selected as the vendor if their proposal comes in. So, I think, I would just respectfully state to my fellow board members that you may want to think that through in your decision-making. I respectfully will not be debating people's opinions about members of the Board of Appeals, but I'm just saying this in generality, and it's not directed at any prior speaker. I voted in favor of Mr. Veerman the past two times. I intend to vote in favor of him again tonight. He's dedicated his time to the Board of Appeals for a myriad of different cases. I know this is a very contentious topic. You know, I'm not going to speculate what someone's genuine intentions are, but I think it deserves credit that someone would even put their name forward for even consideration. He could easily have taken a hall pass on this every time that it's come up, and he's put his name in there to come to this board, to seek permission to hear the case, and he's been granted it. So, I think he's been very transparent in saying, hey, if you want me to sit this out, I'll sit it out. If you want to give me the ability to hear the case, I'm happy to step in and do my job, just as I've done for other cases. And I understand that, you know, there have been some contentious discussions between Mr. Veerman and maybe other members, but I think, myself, I can speak for myself, I'm not privy to all of the conversations and the different dynamics that have gone on. I know he's been personally attacked. His family's gone through a tremendous amount in trying to be involved in this, and it would be very easy for him to just resign and not be a part of this. And I give the man some credit for having the courage and tenacity to stay in on a board and to come forward with ideas that he felt were right. He was willing to not seek any of the same relief that he was proposing for some of the abutters. He wasn't asking for any financial compensation relative to damages such as that $20,000 proposal that he put forward, and I think it should be stated that in previous instances where he was approved to participate, if we didn't give him that approval and he didn't participate, that application may never have gone anywhere. So, when we needed him, he stood up and he did the job and he voted. And then now, this isn't directed at you, Mr. Shampoo, so please don't take offense to this, I don't want to just pick and choose when we need Mr. Veerman so that it suits the application, so that it passes. I believe we have someone who's part of a board that I feel could act appropriately. I feel that he can be an adult and he can hear cases. I know, you know, I've had people in here that are in the same line of work. I know Mr. McCoy has voted for common vixial licenses for other restaurants, and, you know, granted, it may not be an abutting restaurant, but it's absolutely a competitor. So, you know, we've had instances where people have heard for building permits, that very well, or variances, that could be people that they're friends with and their kids are on each other's soccer teams, so I'm not just singling out Mr. McCoy. I'm just saying, in general, by nature of being in a community and being volunteer residents on boards and committees, we're running into potential perceived conflicts, if you will, just based on the fact that we know people in different capacities. So, you know, I'm not going to debate, you know, whether or not someone's intentions are sincere. I believe that Mr. Veerman has a demonstrated track record being on this board. He's done a good job, and he's done a great service for the town of Wilmington, and he's not the only member of the Board of Appeals, and the Fourth of July has every right to bring their case forward, to make a compelling case. The town has already demonstrated their willingness to work with all parties involved, and we stepped in as a town last year to see that the carnival happened for the residents at home. So, to me, I don't see this request as any different than the previous two requests. The Fourth of July has been the same Fourth of July. It's had, you know, various changes, but I don't feel that I need to change my vote.
I could offer a few comments, Madam Chair. I too respect Mr. Veerman, and I know he's done a great service to the town for many, many years, and I respect that he took a position last year that I disagreed with, but I can appreciate that he stood up and stood for what he believed, so I respect that. I respect his volunteerism. But the bottom line for me is, as I decide whether to make this vote or not, is that I want to make sure that what I consider to be the best week of the year in this community takes place. I think last year, it was said earlier by some of the people who live in that area, and I think it's been shared by those from all over the town, that it was a phenomenal event. A lot of work went into it, the town, the Fourth of July Committee, all the volunteers, made it a terrific week, and I want to make sure that that happens again. I think Mr. McCoy said it's been going on for many, many years, long before I was born, it's been celebrated, and
Don't rub it in.
And I look forward to celebrating it again with this community. So, I'm grappling with trying to decide if allowing Mr. Veerman to hear this case poses any threat to potentially having this great event. And to be quite honest, I have concerns that it may, but I also have concerns that if Mr. Veerman does not hear this case, that potentially we could find ourselves in another difficult position because of a particular carnival that ends up getting the bid, or another potential conflict may be that if we don't get the four votes, you know, it has to be a unanimous vote, is that correct?
Yes.
As you mentioned earlier.
Of the four.
So, I think there's a couple of different things here to consider, some that we can't predict.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, if I may, out of personal privilege, you kind of, you called me out there a little bit, so I got to respond. You know, we do indeed owe Mr. Veerman a debt of gratitude for his service on this board for, gosh, I'm not sure how long he's been on, it's six or seven years, maybe longer than that. You know, I think unfortunately for him, he got a lot of press last year because of the Fourth of July vote. But I want everyone to know that he has participated, you know, I don't even know how many hours he donates. He's a volunteer like we are, and like many people on boards that are either appointed or elected, and he volunteers myriad hours together with his colleagues on that board, and is an attorney by trade, and by virtue of that, I think offers a particularly skilled and valuable perspective on the myriad issues that come before that board, not the least of which was the Treska case last year. So, you know, the input and the value that he brings to the town of Wilmington and how he protects the town of Wilmington's interests can't be overstated. So, that all being said, you know, we're here again talking about the Fourth of July, which is so dear to all of us, and me included. But the reality of it is, I'm not, sorry, Judy, I'm not picking and choosing when we use Dan and when we don't. The reality of it is, we needed Dan because we had recused members, and we needed to get this issue before that board, and so we had to take a vote to free Dan from his perceived conflict of interest. And fortunately, Dan was able to step up and took that vote, and, you know, last year it didn't work out all that well until the town got involved and we submitted a new application, and we don't have to relive the history. But in this particular case, we don't need to free him from his conflict of interest. Lou Ross, our town attorney, has advised us by virtue of advising Dan here that there is a perceived, there is a closeness of his property, and that the prudent and safe thing would be to recuse himself. I think we should take that as advice to us, that he is indeed, potentially, it could be perceived by someone outside looking in, that there is potential for conflict there, conflict of interest. And so, where we don't need him to enter into that potential conflict of interest scenario, I don't think we should force him to do it. I think we should let him sit it out. And I think he's willing to participate in the vote and participate in the conversation. The reality of it is, I know Scott Grant pretty well and the Fourth of July Committee, and I'm really certain that they're not going to submit an application to the Board of Appeals that includes anything that could put any of the other members in jeopardy of not being able to hear the case. So, again, I don't feel like I'm picking and choosing. I feel like I'm being prudent based on counsel advice and based on the fact that we have four members on that board that can hear the case, and, you know, it is what it is. You know, Dan's a good man, and he's valuable to the town, and I hope that my taking this position, he doesn't view as me singling him out because of where he lives, but rather, hopefully he sees it. He's a smart guy. Hopefully, he sees my true intentions here.
Just to clarify, just if I may, is that the same legal advice is the same legal advice he's always gotten. So, there's nothing unique about the recusing part. I mean, any time I've ever gotten a legal opinion, a legal opinion is always going to be on the conservative end of things. We're not forcing him to participate. He's bringing it to us for, and respectfully stated, I don't know, I guess we would respectfully disagree, that I don't know that you have enough information to know that you truly don't need Dan to take a position, because you don't know what the future of the application is. You haven't even seen the application. And if history repeats itself for however many years that we've had the carnival in the past five years, Fiesta has been front and center. So, you know, to the points that have already been stated to my right about various vote calculations, this may come back to be a problem. It could. So, I'm just putting it out there before the vote's taken, because once it's taken, it's taken.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would agree with Selectman Bendel that there could be an issue with the carnival. We don't know who's going to be the choice for it. We probably have a good idea from past track record, it's going to be Fiesta Shows or Fiesta Shows, but I don't see Mr. Veerman having a financial interest in the matter, and that's what counts for me anyways. And there's certainly nothing wrong with people having differences of opinion. That's what makes the world go round. It's a good thing that we have people that don't have the same opinion all the time, so we can see everybody's point of view. So, I think that he's served in the past. He serves admirably on the Board of Appeals. This board, through its, you know, knowledge and experience, kept him on the past few years for this vote, and I think we should keep him on again.
Okay, anything further?
Is there any indication of when we may get to see the request? I know Scott Grant, Mr. Grant presented some of the proposal, but any idea when we'll see the entire proposal?
I can certainly include in the Selectman's mailing that will go out at the end of the week, the application that was submitted to the Board of Appeals.
Please.
Okay, if there isn't anything further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Mr. Veerman being allowed to hear the case? Opposed?
I just want to add one thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
If I may, you know, it may be not be appropriate, but I just wanted to add that I would, although, again, I'll state that again, that I disagree with Mr. Veerman's position, I don't want to put the town at any risk for potentially not being able to have this wonderful event, and I have to put my trust in a fellow volunteer who has done the right thing in the past, served the town, that hopefully he will do the right thing, so I will vote in favor of Mr. Veerman.
Okay, so once again, all those in favor? Three opposed. Two, voting passes. Do you want to cross call Mr. Veerman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next board to consider item.
This next one is, the gravity on this far exceeds the gravity of this last issue, and that is considering the appointment of Denise Casey to the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Yes, it's very timely. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
So, just as a point of information, as you know, the Cable TV Advisory Committee has been reactivated here recently to deal with the cable license renewal for Comcast, and there will be a public hearing, in fact, we're looking at a date in February, to go through a process called ascertainment, where the town identifies cable-related needs that we believe should be, Comcast should be addressing. So, one of the individuals that I would like to have serving on that committee is Denise Casey.
Okay, great. Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Denise Casey to the Cable TV Advisory Task Force?
Come on.
Second.
Second, a genuine discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations.
Next on the board to consider, we have a number of licenses, and as was done in past years, I would suggest that the actual signing, if the board is so inclined, that once votes are taken, the signing can take place in my office.
Sounds great.
So, first, we have the automatic amusement devices. This is K-1 Speed, Inc., 40 Fordham Road. There are nine devices, eight are renewals, and one is an additional device. The police chief recommends approval of the nine devices, as noted in the application. I would also note that there's a separate to that, one billiard room, and there is a one renewal for a billiard table and one request for an additional table. Again, the police chief has no issues with this request.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion to grant this licensing?
I think a motion that we grant through requests is directed by the town manager.
Which has been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next is two all-alcohol club licenses. The first being Fordham Road, I'm sorry, Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, 99 Fordham Road. The second is 4982 Building Associates, Inc., doing business as Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Avenue. Again, this is an all-alcohol club license, and the recommendation from the police chief upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2017 club license renewal request submitted by the following, as previously noted.
One question, Jeff, just as a point of clarification, is that the Knights of Columbus, Mr. Liston is still listed as the manager?
Yes.
How is that playing out, just for the benefit of the board, since we did recently have the Knights of Columbus in with Jana Daniels and Mr. Woods?
So, under the renewal process, the requirement is that the existing either members on the Board of Directors or the existing manager must complete the application. So, at the time that the application was due, which was the November 30th, Mr. Liston was the only individual on record with the ABCC, and so as a consequence, he needed to submit the renewal application. In the interim, as you know, the Board of Selectmen voted for a new, to designate a new manager. That information has gone to the ABCC, but we will not receive a confirmation of that until after this process. So, that is why he is
Listed.
Listed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And all have received favorable recommendations for these renewals?
Yes, so, I'm just going with the first two here. If the board is so inclined to take a vote on the club licenses.
Club licenses. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to grant the club licenses as described by the manager.
Move to approve the club licenses for Fordham Associates and 4982 Building Association.
Second.
Okay, anything further? Yes.
I'd like to abstain, having worked there.
Okay. Based on that fact, can we take them up as two separate items, please?
I knew that too, and I'm sorry. So, I'll move to approve the Fordham Associates, Aleppo Temple.
Michael, do you want to second that again, please?
Yes, second.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And then the second, please.
I'll move to approve the 4982 Building Association, KFC.
Okay, which has been made.
Second.
Seconded, and this time I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Okay, four, four, and one abstention. Thank you.
Next, we have five all alcohol package store licenses. The first being Aviage LLC, doing business as Colonial Park Liquors, 35 Lowell Street, Unit 9. 211 Lowell Street Corporation, DBA Eastgate Liquors, 211 J Lowell Street. Shoprite Liquors, Inc., doing business as Eli's Country Store, 381 Middlesex Avenue. Supertarget Liquors of Massachusetts, DBA Target, 210 Balladvale Street. And then Mystic Liquors, Inc., DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits, 258 Main Street. The recommendation from the police chief upon review of the Wilmington Police Department recommendation is for approval of the 2017 package store license renewal requests submitted by the following, and the chief references those that I just identified.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to grant the package store licenses, including Sunday sales, as read by the manager.
So moved.
Which has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next, we have nine all alcohol restaurant licenses. The first being Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, Number 3007599 at 144 Lowell Street. Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill and Bar, 207 Main Street. A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. The next one is Semen Berry, Inc., DBA Michael's Place, 110 Lowell Street. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E Lowell Street, also known as 217 Lowell Street. GPP Tavern LLC, doing business as Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. C&amp;C Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. LLM Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. Wilmington East Coast Diner Inc., DBA The East Coast Diner, 203 Lowell Street. The recommendation from the police chief upon review of the Wilmington Police Department recommendation is for approval of the 217, 217 restaurant license renewal request submitted by the following, and he also lists the same nine as I just cited.
Questions, comments, or a motion to grant the restaurant licenses, as read by the manager?
I would grant the, I would move to grant the all alcohol restaurant licenses, as read.
Just a point of information, the board may wish to take a separate vote on Michael's Place to allow Selectman McCoy to abstain.
Okay, let's, sure, let's entertain a motion for all restaurants, with the exception of Michael's Place at this time.
I would make that motion.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Take up Michael's Place separately, please. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to grant the request.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, four, four, and one abstention, thank you.
Next, we have two Class 1 vehicle licenses. Doobie Auto Group, Inc., Bill Doobie Hyundai, 271 Main Street. And the other is Semino Automotive, Inc., DBA Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi, 580 Main Street. Both for Class 1. Recommendation from the police chief is approval on both. Recommendation, and that's, I guess that's it, just from the police chief.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the Class 1 licenses, as read by the manager?
So moved.
Which has been made, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next are eight Class 2 used vehicle licenses. The first being Wilmington Shell, Inc., DBA Advanced Auto Technologies, 7779 Woburn Street. Charlie's Auto Sales, 611 Main Street. Forest Auto Repair, 600 Main Street. Heavy Equipment Connection, Inc., 239 Andover Street. Imperial Auto LLC, 845 Woburn Street, Suite D. J&amp;E Service Corp., 619 Rear Main Street. Unique Auto Care, Inc., 611 Main Street. And NEA, Inc., DBA Z&amp;S Gas and Service, 603 Main Street. Again, the recommendation from the police chief, based upon the review of all eight of these, is to grant approval for these 2017 applications.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the Class 2 licenses, as read by the manager?
Show move.
Motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
We next have common victualers. There's 44 of these, so it'll be a little bit of time here. First being 99 Restaurant of Boston, 99 Restaurant and Pub, Number 30075, 144 Lowell Street. Ann Jam, Inc., DBA A&amp;J's Kitchen, 162 Lowell Street. Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, 99 Fordham Road. Dees Corner LLC, DBA As Good As It Gets Cafe, 35 Lowell Street, Unit 8. Brothers Roast Beef and Pizza, 331 Main Street. Mars Steron Corporation and LBK LLC, doing business as Burger King, 280 Lowell Street. Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill and Bar, 207 Main Street. Hung Thai, Inc., DBA China Whack, 329 Main Street. Krish Convenience, Inc., DBA The Corner Store, 296 Shashin Avenue, Suite 1. Country Chef Restaurant, 139 Main Street. Adam Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 211 Lowell Street. DJQ Donuts, LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 66 S Concord Street. Hannan Donuts, LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 357 Middlesex Avenue. Jane Marie Donuts, LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 206 Balladvale Street. C&amp;C Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 195 Main Street. Wilmington Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 329 Main Street. A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. 579 Main Street, yes, 579 Main Street Donut Shop, Inc., DBA Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street. Gelev Enterprises LLC, Wilmington House of Pizza, 325 Main Street. Jasmine Cuisine, Inc., DBA Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, 35 Lowell Street. K-1 Speed, Inc., 40 Fordham Road. 4982 Building Associates, Inc., DBA Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Ave. Doodle Sack LLC, DBA La Rosa, Unit 211, 269 Main Street. TH McCoy Restaurant, Inc., LLC, DBA McDonald's Restaurant, 212 Main Street. Some Semen Berry, Inc., DBA Michael's Place, 110 Lowell Street. Madosh Cafe, 16 Upton Drive. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E Lowell Street, also 217 Lowell Street. PR Restaurants LLC, Panera Bread, 228 Main Street. K&amp;Q, Inc., DBA Peters Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood, 2 Lowell Street. BGP Tavern LLC, Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. St. Moses, Inc., DBA Rizzo's Restaurant, Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, 3R Church Street, Units 1 and 2. C&amp;C Restaurant, Inc., DBA Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. Charlie's 2 Corporation, DBA Smart's Super Beef, 279 Main Street. RT Web Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Sonic Drive-In, 220 Main Street. Starbucks Corporation, DBA Starbucks Coffee, Number 11757, 253 Main Street. Maxwell Lee, DBA Stop and Go, 3 Jefferson Road. Watertown Enterprises, DBA Subway, 206 Balladvale Street, Unit 2. Kamara's Store, Inc., DBA Subway, Number 56883, 66 U Concord Street. 337 Main Street, Inc., DBA Subway, 66331, 337 Main Street. CDC Diner, DBA Sunnyside Cafe, 2 Jefferson Road. Diane T. Cuts, DBA Sunrise Kitchen, 355 Middlesex Avenue. Sweet Pizza, Inc., DBA Sweet Pizza, 206 Balladvale Street, Unit 4. Target Corporation, 210 Balladvale Street. LLM, Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. Each of these has been reviewed by the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, and she recommends approval. No issues with compliance of the food code with these establishments. Also, Al Spalding, the Inspector of Buildings, has reviewed each of these after review and consideration of the town Wilmington bylaw and all applicable codes. I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above mentioned businesses. So, on this one, I would recommend approval. You may want to consider voting in the aggregate, with the exception of Michael's Place.
And the Knights of Columbus.
And the Knights of Columbus, yes.
So, I'd like to, well, first of all, we have six Duncan Donuts and three Subways. We definitely have, we have coffee and subs covered. But having said that, I'd like to carve out Michael's Place separate, Knights of Columbus separate, and also La Rosa's separate as well, and take up the remaining restaurants as one collective group, if that's okay?
Sure. Does Jeff want to read those again?
Yeah. So, the entire list, with the exception of those three restaurants, would anyone like to make a motion to give those?
Make a motion to grant the requests as described by the manager.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, let's take up Michael's Place. Motion to grant the commenting.
I'll move to approve Michael's Place.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Four, four, and one abstention. Okay, moving on to the KFC.
Can I make a motion?
Which has been made?
Now, second that?
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, four, four, anyone abstained? One abstention. Okay, and then moving on to La Rosa's.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all those in favor? Four, four, and I'm abstained, please. Thank you.
Next are four entertainment licenses, and the four are Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E Lowell Street, also 217 Lowell Street. BGP Tavern LLC, doing business as Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. C&amp;C Restaurant Group, Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. And LLM, Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. These applications have been reviewed by the Police Department. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2017 entertainment license application renewal request submitted by the following, which are the four previously noted.
Questions, comments, or a motion to grant these entertainment license renewals?
Make a motion to grant the request.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. The last item, is that still on there?
Let's see, well, the next one is board to consider approval of the Sunday, Sunday entertainment license for K-1.
Yes.
So, as you recall, in past year, at least the last year, K-1 Speed is seeking to operate on Sundays. Their hours are proposed at 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. In order to operate during this time, it requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to grant that?
Make a motion to request, to grant the request.
Okay, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a quick question, are they not offering it all on Sundays right now, or do they have different hours?
They are. The board granted a similar license last year, it's just that per statute, they have to get a separate license.
Much obliged, thank you.
Okay, so, I have a motion, I have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, board to consider access agreements. So, this, the access agreements were, there was some back and forth in terms of language between Olin's Council and Town Council. The issue at hand here is that the Environmental Protection Agency is requiring that Olin establish essentially the boundaries of the contamination zone in a particular area, and some of the properties that, where they need to locate these test wells are on town property, so they're seeking access to install these test wells. Just this afternoon, I guess around 3:00, Lou Ross got back to me that the agreements had come back from their council. He did review them, I guess, later in the day, but I've not had a chance to review them one final time, so I would suggest that we defer on this, and the board take it up at your meeting in January.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you can either table it or simply just to put it on the agenda for the meeting of January 9.
Discretionary, that's fine, whatever.
Want to make a formal motion to table it, since based on the subject matter, I think we should probably do that, so let's.
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table to the next Board of Selectmen's meeting in January.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Public comments? Hearing none? Okay, new business committee reports. I'll start to my left.
Nothing of real major substance. We agreed to disagree tonight, and it felt good. I mean, I didn't go my way, but you know what? That's the way government's supposed to work, and I thought it went well. So, I compliment everybody for that. I want to compliment the town for the tree lighting and for the Festival of Trees last weekend, was it? Just a great night. You know, that town common was filled with people of all ages, and to me, it just embodies what we really are, and it's the fabric of who we are as a community. So, kudos to everyone that came out and participated in those events, and I'll just close with saying Merry Christmas.
Okay.
I'm good, Madam Chair. Merry Christmas to all, and to all a merry good night. Here you go.
Anything on the air?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention, on December 3rd, I had the honor of going to the Brockton VA with the iPods for Wounded Veterans. That's a local organization that was started by Paul Cardillo in Wilmington and has since gone national. And I was there along with Terry Masiello, the Director of Senior Services or Elder Services, and there were about eight Wilmington High School students there as well. And there were 175 veterans that they had a Christmas party for, that they gave out some gifts, and it was just a, it was just a wonderful afternoon that this organization does. And I want to make comment, and because Paul asked me to make comment, but I would have anyways, that the seniors at the senior center, that they make bracelets, and they make knit hats and mittens and gloves for these veterans. And congratulations, it's just a wonderful thing that they do at the senior center, time and time again. And I know that they're having another big event at the Chelsea Soldiers' Home in January sometime, where they're going to be honoring World War II veterans. And as a side note, the Secretary of Veterans Affairs was there, Secretary. And as a side note, the Secretary of Veterans Affairs was there, Secretary?
Urana.
Urana?
Yeah.
Was, he was here at the Purple Heart designation of our community and he made mention to me that Senator Tar is putting through a bill that's going to be similar to what was done in Wilmington. He's gonna, they're gonna pass a bill based off of our community for Purple Heart community. So, that, that's an ongoing process. I thought that was pretty, pretty neat that they, that he was doing that. The other thing I'd like to mention, and I know you just briefly touched on it, Jeff, was the meeting that you're gonna be attending with our chairperson for the New England Trans-Rail. And, you know, kudos to Selectman Bendel for bringing forward the fact that we should write a letter to those principal people, Senator Markey Warren and Congressman Moulton. And I can't stress the importance enough, that meeting that you'll be attending and from what I understand, it's this week and it would be nice if you elaborated more, if you knew more. Will, you know, Senator Markey be there? Will Senator Warren be there? Will Congressman Moulton be there? This is, you know, we stress the importance of this as, as we should and getting a meeting with those principal people is, is just a great, kudos to, to this Board and to the letter that you wrote for inviting them here, for them to say, "Come over here and we'll sit down and have a, have a discussion." So, that, couldn't stress the importance enough on that. So, maybe, you know, you can touch on that or Chairman O'Connell can mention that a little bit more. And finally, congratulations to the Where One Wilmington for the Festival of Trees and the Fourth of July Committee for the tree lighting. It was a great, great night, a great weekend and Merry Christmas and have a happy and healthy New Year to everybody out there in the audience.
Jeff, did you have any comments that you wanted to share on that?
It's not clear to me whether the Senators and Representative will actually be in attendance. Certainly their aides will be, but I think the intent is to have a candid conversation about what the approach will be to address the NET proposal.
Thank you for doing that also. I agree with Selectman Kyra, appreciate that. Obviously, we're all strongly opposed to that, so whatever we can do to help, certainly, please let us know. I want to just echo the comments of my colleagues who already said, my wife and I really enjoyed the tree lighting. It was an awesome event. It was great to see everybody out there having a great time. And I lastly just want to wish my colleagues here, the manager and the staff here and everybody at home a very Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy New Year.
So, I too was at the tree lighting and the Festival of Trees. Certainly was a great time. I saw quite a few of you down there. Certainly was great to support this very community-friendly event, both events. I also was here at Town Hall for the Santa Parade and was here to greet Santa on, what was it, Saturday or Sunday? So, it was great to see the kids out. It was a little bit cold, but it certainly didn't reduce the spirit of everybody that was there. So, thank you to everybody that put that on. I know there were a lot of volunteers that took the time out of their day to do that and just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season and a wonderful New Year in 2017. So, with that, I will turn it over to you, Jeff, for important dates.
Important dates, we have December 14th, the Facility Master Plan will be brought up. It's, my understanding, it's just going to be a brief discussion with regard to an additional option that's been added onto the mix there, but that will be at the Wilmington High School in Room 1-062 at 6:30 p.m., school committee meeting agenda item. Also, on December 15th, the Facilities Master Plan Committee meets here in the auditorium. Town offices are closed on the 26th of December and the 2nd of January. Then, January 3rd through the 13th is the curb side collection of Christmas trees. The Hardin Tavern will be having an open house from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on January 8th. And then the next Selectmen's meeting is January 9th here at 7:00 p.m.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn, could I just ask you, evidently there's a meeting relative to New York Trans-Rail and you're gonna be meeting. Is that open to any of the members? Because I would love to be at that meeting because I've been opposed to this since 2003, since day one. I didn't know how that was working relative to who was invited, not invited.
Well, I got a call this afternoon from the Regional Director, from Senator Markey's office and he, she was asking if the Chair and I could attend. So, you know, I think it's, you know, looking to try to just have a, you know, conversation that is, we can be very candid about what is going to be happening in terms of strategy there.
All right, I'd just leave that with the Chair. I'd be interested if I could attend that meeting. Obviously, like I said, I've been involved for many, many years and I've been very opposed to it since day one, but I'll leave that up to the Chair if an invitation, if an invitation is able to, any one of us, I would particularly love to go to that if possible, but I'll just leave it at that, that's all.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show move.
Maybe, second, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, good night. Thank you.